I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of January 4th, 2017. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. We'd like to welcome new Planning Commission members Dean Finnegan and Tracy Edgerton and Tom Beckius. Thanks, I think this is the first time we've had nine people here for quite a while. That's exciting and great, so welcome to all of you.
Thank you.
If you parked in the parking garage across the street to the north, the gate is open and no parking coupons are necessary. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, commissioners and the staff, cellular phone usage is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of this meeting and we appreciate your cooperation. The Planning Commission action on all items on today's agenda is a recommendation to the City Council. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held December 14th, 2016. May I have a motion?
Move approval.
Harris?
Second.
Shear? Jerry, please call the vote.
Beckius?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, nine to zero.
The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I'll ask Jerry to read all the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we ask that you stand and state that item. The item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Jerry, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Yes, under Change of Zone and Related Use Permit is Item 1.1A, Change of Zone Number 16043 from R2 Residential District to O3 Office Park District for an early childhood care facility. And the related item, Item 1.1B, is Use Permit Number 16011 for an early childhood care facility with setback waivers, both generally located at 80-80-O Street. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these applications?
I see none.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on either of these consent agenda items? If so, please stand and state that item.
Don't see anyone, so I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval, Corr?
Thank you.
Second.
Weber?
Thank you. Jerry, please call the vote.
Beckius?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, nine to zero.
There are no requests for deferrals, so we will now proceed to public hearings. The staff will make a brief presentation. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. Each person testifying should state their name and address and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes, then you'll have one minute to wrap up your testimony. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Jerry, please call the first public hearing item.
Okay, under Change of Zone and Related Special Permits, it's Item 4.1A, Change of Zone Number 16034 from R2 Residential District to R2 Residential District with landmark designation of the John D. Cordner House on property generally located at 325 South 55th Street. Staff recommendation is for approval. An item, the associated item, is Item 4.1B, Special Permit Number 16055 to preserve the landmark John G. L. Cordner residence and add eight single-family residences on individual lots and one outlot for a private drive and amenities with waivers to sidewalk requirements, lot width-to-depth ratio, lots fronting a public or private roadway requirement, front yard setbacks, minimum lot width and area, and sidewalk requirements along the private driveway on property generally located at 325 South 55th Street. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these applications?
I see none. Stacy?
Stacy Hagaman, Planning Department. So Change of Zone 16034 is to request to designate the John and Adella Cordner House as a landmark. And then SP 16055 is an associated request for a special permit for historic preservation to permit a community unit plan with nine dwelling units on the home site. This one and a quarter acre site is a remnant of an original 10-acre parcel purchased by the Cordners near the turn of the century, the previous century. The Cordners moved to the vicinity in the late 1890s, built their home at 325 South 55th Street in about 1910, and then lived there until they moved to California in 1937. Their daughter then owned the house until 1948. In the 50s and 60s, the 10-acre lot was subdivided and then 35 ranch-style houses were built on the same block as the Cordner House, and you can see them surrounding here and then further down 55th Street as well. The Cordner House is significant as a locally rare example of a large cross-gambrel Dutch colonial revival house. It has additional significance as the longtime home designed and built for Lincoln architect The two-and-a-half-story frame house has brick veneer on the first story and clapboard siding on the upper story. The unusual principal facade faces east toward 56th Street, and the front door is located here within this recessed entry with a single column at the corner right here. The entryway ceiling is meticulously trimmed with a dentil border and a shallow coffer around the central pendant light. This is the east facade again, and then this is the north. The east, north, and south facades have asymmetrical patterns of windows on the first story with symmetrical patterns above, which is kind of odd. And the north and south sides each have bay windows. This one on the north side is clad in brick, and the one on the south is limestone. There are two leaded clear glass windows on the south side and one on the east front This is the west facade here. This facade is the rear facade of the house and has a rear entrance and an almost centered brick chimney that pierces the eaves of the roof. The west side is the only face that has asymmetrical windows on both the first and second story. And the most highly finished room in the house is the dining room, shown here, with wainscoting and a beamed ceiling and this built-in cupboard here on the north side. And instead of lath and plaster or plasterboard, the interior walls and ceilings are sheathed in this, or were sheathed in this compo board, which is an early 20th century alternative that's made of thin wooden slats that are tightly butted together and glued between two sheets of cardboard. It's an interesting product. The floor plan of the house is mostly going to be retained, but a lot of the wall and ceiling surfaces are being replaced because of mold damage. The house has been vacant for a long period of time. The other aspect of its significance is its association with John Cordner. John Gilmore Cordner moved to Lincoln in the late 1880s, and he's listed in the Lincoln directories as both a carpenter and an architect. Although he had other business partners in Lincoln, the most notable is his association with A.W. Woods. They worked together from 1906 to 1912. Together, they designed the Star Van and Storage Building in Haymarket, which was presumably the first reinforced concrete warehouse of its kind in Lincoln. Other local examples of their work together include the First United Methodist Church and University Place and the Tiferet Israel Synagogue at 18th and L Streets. After his partnership with Woods ended, Cordner designed the Mark Woods House, shown here at 2501 South Street. He also on his own designed the College View Carnegie Library and the Lancaster County Poor Farm Residence. The landmark application was reviewed by Historic Preservation Commission on December 15th, and they recommended its approval. And the special permit for historic preservation is for this CUP here, the existing historic house located just off the cul-de-sac here, and then the driveway comes up, accessing five lots on the west and then three lots that are north of the Cordner House. So the landmark designation for the special permit would allow the community unit plan and the associated waivers. The special permit would waive the CUP density requirement with those accompanying reductions in yard and area requirements to permit the nine single-family dwellings. By right, a parcel of this size in the R2 District would allow four duplexes to be built, so that's a total of eight units, and that wouldn't preserve the historic house. So really, we're adding the eight units and keeping the historic house. So it's developing single-family houses in a neighborhood of single-family houses. It would encourage the maintenance and improvement of the historic house and its neglected site. Maintenance has been ongoing since the applicant's ownership of the property, and then this special permit and the sale of the associated single-family houses would facilitate his continued work and the sustainability of the historic house. These are some kind of schematic images of what those houses could look like. This is an image of the three east residences, and then this would be the ones on the west. The houses would be laid out around kind of a central gazebo feature, all accessed off a private driveway. Historic Preservation Commission also reviewed these designs of the houses that relate more closely with the historic house than with the other ranch-style houses in the neighborhood, and they recommended approval of those designs. So staff recommendation is conditional approval, minor changes to their site plans, and provided that they have a grading and drainage plan, that's revised to the satisfaction of Public Works. The applicant did attend Witherby Neighborhood Association meeting December 1st, and Ed and George attended that meeting, so they could answer questions about that. We haven't received any lots of letters about the project. We received one letter in support, and I believe just today there's one in opposition, so not a lot to add. Any questions?
Questions for Stacy?
So you just received letters today?
I think we had someone call. Oh, sorry. Okay, no, not today, sorry.
Anything else?
I have a question. I realize this neighborhood has, some of the streets have sidewalks, some don't, but I was curious why the recommendation to waive sidewalks. I feel like it really diminishes the perception of walkability in a neighborhood to not have a sidewalk. And I realize, you know, you're trying to put a lot of houses into one area, but it feels like you're asking people to walk down the driveway, which doesn't really feel like, you know, it doesn't feel inviting for pedestrians.
And Steve may have to correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that there isn't a sidewalk requirement because this is a private driveway, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it wouldn't be required and it's not a roadway. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. Then it's a little confusing why there was the recommendation for no sidewalks.
Oh.
So I...
That, I think, has to do with block length, where we provide a pedestrian way kind of easement that allows access through long blocks. And where I think it's that this property isn't really located where you can get through it to go to make a connection through the block to the street, and we're waiving that requirement, because it's essentially at the end of a cul-de-sac, so you can't get around the block length by providing that access through, if that makes sense.
It does. So anyone who was, let's say that someone purchased Lot 5, for them to travel north, they have to exit to the south, walk all the way around.
That's right.
Any other questions? Thank you.
I'm Kelly Langer. I'm the applicant. Our plan is to live in this restored home. I've lived in Lincoln since 78 and have known about this house and have wanted it for a long, long time, and it finally came available. And there were some other folks who wanted the house and had some other uses that they were looking into, and none of those panned out, so I'm the lucky one who got to buy the property. House was derelict inside. There's a little bit of termite damage, a lot of mold damage, so we've had to take all the walls and ceilings out, and we're going to do very minor modifications to the floor plan. But I've been building in Village Gardens at 56th and Pine Lake for about five years, and my experience there has been to build 24 houses this exact width on lots that I had replanted from single-family 70-foot-wide lots into lots that are the same size as these, and it's gone very well. What I've found is that they appeal to everyone, so it's not like we're trying to appeal to any one particular demographic. So they've been received well. The resale has been excellent on them, and I think infill development's something that Lincoln needs to do more of. I know the 2040 Comprehensive Plan speaks to it. I know there's a lot of enthusiasm for it, but people are a little hesitant because it's not an easy road. It's much easier to go out behind Kohl's, south, buy eight lots, build those houses, and just keep churning it out, getting further and further from the core. So I'd like to, if you're going to say you want lower property taxes, maybe do something that increases density. So I'm trying to put my money where my mouth is, so that's my motivation. Plus, I like to do things that are just a little different, and this is a little different.
Any questions for Mr. Langer?
So the staff report and the minutes from the Historic Preservation talked about this being a pocket neighborhood. Would you mind just kind of describing that term and how you envision a pocket neighborhood?
I wish I would have invented that. People a lot smarter than me on the west coast, that's a common term out there. They started as bungalow courts in the 30s, and then it sort of expanded. Chapin's, the architect out in Washington who's done a lot of this, Ross Chapin, and pocket neighborhoods are basically taking derelict or underutilized spaces and repurposing them to encourage people to relate to one another again. It's very easy, I lived in a neighborhood south and east in town, and you pull in your garage, garage door comes down, you don't know anybody. These kind of neighborhoods where you have to walk, you know, where there's no sidewalk, you're walking on the driveway together. We're going to have a community garden that's going to be 30 feet wide and 90 feet long. What I've found in Village Gardens is when people garden together, they tend to talk about more than just tomatoes. They get to know one another a little bit. I think that's a great thing, and it's something that's missing pretty much across the city. So pocket neighborhoods encourage people to relate to one another, and not to be in each other's business in a negative sense, but just to know one another and have some care and concern for one another, and I think that's a good thing.
Can you show me on the plans where that community garden is going to be located?
Yes. It's this whole space back here. So it's 30 foot wide and 90 foot long, and then there'll be a public walkway that takes you from the paved area down a mulch path that'll take you to the garden area. Plan is to have those be raised bed gardens, and I'll construct those. That's the lowest part of the property. Everything sort of goes that way. We're going to keep the houses up. We've done the, I haven't, I don't know how to do that stuff, but there's been a drainage study done, and we're going to actually have a net less water coming, going out and more coming in, so that's where that's going to be.
How do you plan to phase this project? Because from what I understand, these are kind of custom-built, so you really kind of have a buyer in mind before you start construction.
No, I will, given, in best of all possible worlds, I'll start one house. Hopefully, it sells right away, and then we'll start another one down the line that way. But I'm not going to start five of them or three of them. They'll be on a spec sale, spec sale, or if we have a presold, if somebody comes along, we'll do that.
How are you, how are you, I'm assuming that you're doing most of the work yourself for the builds?
No.
No, you're not.
I'm just a general contractor, so...
How long is it going to take you before you move into the Cordner House estimate?
I've been working on it pretty hard for, well, since I bought it, which has been almost two months. Probably a year and a half before I'm in there. It's, it had one restroom in the whole house right off the kitchen, and it was, it's just not a great design for today's living, so, but yeah, it's got a lot of work.
My concern is, I know you did the church over in 40th and A, and I've, I talked to you about that project, but what, and I'm also familiar with the other project that you did on Randolph where you built the garage on the...
Oh, yeah.
And my problem with the church is that it seemed to take so long, and it seemed like it was left in a derelict state for a long time, and that is on a major street where this isn't, and so I just want to make sure that we're not leaving this historic property in a derelict condition while you're too busy building the other houses.
Yeah, that church was further gone than when we bought it. We knew, we had to basically redo most of the foundation there, and there was nothing in there. There was, it was simply, it just took a long time. That one I did do mostly all by myself. But here, we're going to have, this is too big a project. That was a duplex that, you know, I was just, I would go there and work nights, and it was a cathartic thing.
So I assume that you kind of have a system down now where you, since you're already doing the Village Gardens down south, you're going to kind of use that same methodology here and have...
Right. And these houses typically take six months to seven months from permit to move in, so it's pretty standard fare.
How did you come about with the nine units? I mean, is that some magic number?
Actually, just based on what I've been doing in those lot sizes and that those have been selling and they've been a marketable product, and so I just built them that way. It makes financial sense for me to maximize the density. The three in the back are a little bit smaller than the other five in terms of width, but the Cordner House that I'm going to be restoring is going to probably take $25,000 to $250,000 just to bring it back to livability.
And these are the same lot sizes that you have down in Village Gardens?
They're not quite as deep, they're the exact width. And these actually have more space between them than what I've been doing in Village Gardens, where we've had three-foot and four-foot staggered on each side of, so we've got a minimum of seven. These have 10 feet between, so I think building in safety likes 10 feet better, and I want to keep everybody happy.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here that would like to testify in support of this item? And I just remind everybody that we're talking about both of the items, Change of Zone 16034 and Special Permit 16055. Is there anyone here wishing to testify in opposition to this item? Please come forward.
I'm William P. Wenz. I live at 345 South 55th Street, and if this comes up, this is the Cordner House here, and I live in this particular house here. First off, I want to say it's cool that you're doing something to that house, you know, that, I've lived there for over 30 years, and I know the property well. I've been in the house a few times. My son used to build Fort over in this area back about 20 years ago. My number-one concern is with that many units, housing units, the traffic might be a problem. Figure one to two cars per residence, and the only access is through 55th Street, and it's a cul-de-sac. I don't know how pertinent this would be. In conversations to the lady that used to live here, who was an original owner of this particular property, she and another lady that lived right next to me, they since passed on, but, and I don't know if this is hearsay, but this is what they said, that the houses across 56th Street at the east end of that property, when they developed those, there was a stipulation that if they sold those, there would no longer be any possibility of developing this land. I started researching it, and I don't have enough time to get the answer to you, and I don't know if you want to go down that trail. But my number-one concern is with eight residents plus the Cordner House, that's nine residences, one to two cars per residence, that's a lot of traffic. If someone decides to have a get-together with friends, you know, Christmas party or whatever, where are they going to park? Is there going to be adequate parking for everybody? Some of us on 55th Street already park on the street. It's a single driveway, single-stall garage. I get home before my wife does, so I park on the street. The neighbor right across the street from me in this particular house, he has two cars, one in the drive, one in the street. He's retired. He only drives one car. He alternates. And then the house next to it, a lady owns it, but her son and some friends live there. So there's two or three extra cars, and two of them are on the street again. Other than that, I think it's cool that it's being developed. If you've ever been by there, it's weird, because you've got this big house, it's pink, and then you have these ranch-style houses. So going along with the character of the big house, well, you can't really do that, but the rest of the houses are ranch-style, single-story. I just think the number of dwellings he wants to build there would be too many. So that's all I've got.
Questions for Mr. Wenz?
Yeah, can you tell me, along 55th Street there, the circle, are most of those, they have one-stall garages or two-stall?
Some don't even have a garage, but they're all single driveway, single-stall garage.
So basically, if they have more than one vehicle, they're stacking in the driveway or parking on the street?
Right.
Is it a problem with on-street parking?
No, but if everybody that already lives there parks on the street normally, I'll put this back up. There is a fire hydrant right here.
Yes, I did notice that.
And I don't know if that's going to be moved, so parking is kind of restricted right there. Another thing... Another thing about the sidewalks, it, that's weird. On the east side of the street, sidewalk goes down, partially down around the circle. On the west side, two houses down is the only lot that has a sidewalk. No other house has sidewalks. Why is that? I don't know. It's a nice quiet neighborhood. I'd like to keep it that way. That's why I moved there. I grew up in that general neighborhood.
Any other questions?
So how, if it's the number that, that, that you don't like, what number would you feel comfortable with?
Would you, I don't know. Maybe four? I'm into architecture myself. I wanted to be an architect and houses and stuff interest me. I thought maybe nice four ranch-style houses in there. Times change and stuff. And I've talked to other neighbors about this and I guess I'm the only one from my area. Even, even a block south on the other side of L Street, people were concerned about the traffic. That's my only beef. I mean, I'm glad the house is being renovated, that's there now and to develop it, that's cool. I think eight just may be a bit too much.
Other questions? Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in opposition to this item? Do we have questions for staff? Anyone?
Yes.
Yep. Thanks, Stacy.
The, it looks like all the units being built are one-stall garages. So the, and it looks like there's enough length in the driveway for someone to park in the driveway as well. So if there were two people, two cars, driveway, garage. And then I saw that there were two spaces for visitor parking. And now I have a question that may be in the staff report, but I missed it. So are these all intended to be sold to individuals? And would they belong to an association, a homeowners association? So it's the homeowners association that takes care of the two extra parking places. What are the, are there any ideas about where we, you could put more visitor parking? What's it been like at Village Gardens? Do they need more on occasion? I mean, I've been to a couple of events at Village Gardens, both times, you know, people were struggling to find parking around that park. And every single smidge, I mean, people were sort of kissing bumpers to wedge a car in. And that seemed, um, you know, fairly confusing and, but it was only for, you know, a couple of hours in the afternoon for some graduation party or something. But, you know, if someone were looking to do that in here, where would they park? If there was more than two visitors?
And I don't know that I can answer that. Um, you addressed all, everything I was gonna say is that they each have essentially two parking stalls, one in the garage, one behind the garage, and then they have two extra stalls for the rest of that. And I would just point out that, I mean, it's not gonna be any, really any more traffic than what they could do by right here, so.
If this wasn't a CUP, if it was, you know, I believe it's R-two right now and they put in the duplexes by right that they could do, how many parking spaces would they be required to have?
Oh, good question.
Two, two per dwelling? I, I have some of the same concerns, cause I live in a neighborhood where, I'm fortunate, I have a double-car garage, so, but we do have a single-car driveway, um, that's, you know, and so most of my neighbors, if they have two vehicles, the other one is out on the street. Because otherwise you're jockeying cars all the time. And I do have hesitations about these being all single-car garages. That really concerns me. It, it also concerns me putting so many dwellings in here. I don't know.
Any other questions for staff?
Just, um, the staff report addressed this already, but in terms of cul-de-sacs across the city, this is not an unusual number of dwellings in a cul-de-sac if I understand the staff report correctly.
I, I don't know if I included that in my staff report. I'm not, I'm sorry.
So it says, uh, however, a cul-de-sac with nineteen dwelling units is not unusual for Lincoln. So just asking you to maybe elaborate a little bit on that sentence.
Sure, I, I have that comment in there. Yes, I mean, we typically, you'll, you'll see a lot of cul-de-sacs that might have five or six houses around it, cause there was just one small little spot. So you see some of those cul-de-sacs certainly. But there are certainly some other cul-de-sacs where you might have a dozen to twenty or more houses on them. The other is just simply the reality of this property is that if the Cordenor House was removed and as Kelly had remarked, we actually had three or four different people contacting us about this when it was for sale. And the other plans that were looked at was basically to put in a standard city cul-de-sac. And with that, you could get four lots, each being eighty feet wide, which would each allow a duplex. And so pretty much by right, without a special permit, they could demolish the existing house and put in eight dwelling units and each dwelling unit could have three bedrooms. And those could each legally be rented out separately. So you could end up with twenty-four people here and twenty-four different cars as a maximum by right type of a use. And when people were looking at the type of infrastructure costs that they had to do to put in a standard-sized cul-de-sac, they were coming to the conclusion, well, I'd, I'd have to do eight dwelling units to be able to afford to put in this standard-sized cul-de-sac. So that's why we discussed with Kelly that perhaps there was something that was more sympathetic to the existing house, because we saw some merit to saving the existing house and not have as a dramatic large of a cul-de-sac. This has a much more informal driveway that we've seen on a couple of other projects. You still will end up with nine dwelling units rather than eight dwelling units on the end. But we thought with, for the increase of one dwelling unit, particularly when some of his units, as they are shown in terms of their lot size, they're not particularly large. So you're not potentially gonna be having a lot of people staying in each one of the individual dwelling units just because of the size of the, of the billable area of the dwelling unit. This also then gave through the special permit, the ability then to have some review over how those dwelling units would look. Because on the downside of the parking is if we have a two-stall garage for each one, it's pretty much gonna be the garage doors facing the street and you'd have to enter the house through the garage doors and up in order to do it. And so we thought the, the trade-off here between the parking and the facades was probably have a little bit nicer facades. Even though, yes, it'll probably be fairly tight parking, but you could have a fairly tight parking by right because we don't mandate in the city two-car garages. Typically, people build two-car garages for a unit, but it is not a city requirement.
Any other questions for staff? Mine?
No.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you. Applicant rebuttal?
Nate, six-oh-one Old Chaney Road, Suite A with Reg Engineering, we're the civil engineer on it. And just wanna note that.
Could I, did you say your last name? I'm sorry, I didn't.
Burnett.
Burnett, okay, thank you.
The five units on the west side will actually have a two-car garage. So I think that should be mentioned as well, that these will have a two-car garage plus driveway. The three on the east will just have a single car with the visitor parking. So that adds some relief to, um, go ahead.
And in addition to that, they will also have the two additional stall, parking outside.
Correct, yeah. So I mean, you could have.
Total parking for four of you.
Right, so you could have twenty vehicles.
On each property on the west side, correct?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for pointing it out. It makes a huge difference.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Um, yes. Well, that might've answered all of them.
I just have one question, Nate.
Sure.
Um, if the, if the units, if, if the lots on the west side of the property have two-car garages, that doesn't sync up with the elevations. I don't think it syncs up with the elevations that were submitted. So, um, not that that's a big deal, but it does change a comment that Steve made or may affect a comment that Steve made about what the appearance of those elevations might look like.
Sure, you wanna answer that, Kelly, on the run dreams?
Can you, yeah, just talk maybe about how that would work?
Okay, my plan is, um, drive through any neighborhood in town, everybody has the same exact garage door. Square's about that big. Across the whole front. I'm gonna do carriage doors on these, so they're gonna be a very expensive, very, have windows in all of them, some of them arched, some of them not arched. But since it's a prominent feature on the front of all these, and specifically where it's a two-stall garage, it's very important that you don't just put the cheapest garage door you can find on there, because it's a big player on how it looks. So I plan to spend a lot more on what they call a carriage door, which has windows and has some decoration, maybe some brackets indicated or things like that, so that it dresses it up. But otherwise, if you just cut that door and that elevation in half, just the window above gets wider and the garage door gets wider, everything else will stay the same. And that's a problem I had with, uh, this is done by a west coast architect and that's just what we could get done in time to, to be here.
So, so you're sympathetic to that elevation?
Yes, sir. I, I wouldn't wanna live there where you see ugly garage doors and that's all you see. I don't wanna be involved in that.
Okay, I'm, never mind. I was gonna ask you another question, but I, I think.
I'm sorry for cutting you off, I didn't do that.
Any other questions? Anything else you'd like to share?
I think this would be a, a great infill project, especially being able to keep the existing landmark house and not by right, just, you know, the other developers that were looking at it, uh, where they could have just torn it down and still built, built the eight by going with the special use permit, being able to keep the existing house as well as provide Kelly the income by right that he can to build these, to fix that up and to make that, um, this cul-de-sac kind of a destination point as an infill project would be great for Lincoln.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry, we have to call these separately?
Yes. Okay, item four-point-one-A, this changes on number one-six-zero-three-four. R-two residential district to R-two residential district with landmark designation of the John G. Cordenor House on property generally located at three-twenty-five South Fifty-Fifth Street. Staff recommendation is for approval.
I entertain a motion.
Move approval, Core?
Second, Becky S.
Thank you. Discussion?
Um, I'll, I'll go ahead and start. I, this, I feel like I'm, I like the project, but I don't like the project. I like that we're keeping the house. I think there's a lot of good aspects on this. But my hesitations are we're cramming so many in there. So it helps alleviate some of my concerns to know that this has been done in another part of the city. I, again, I appreciate keeping the original Cordenor House. I myself own a, a property that is of similar age and it needs a lot of repairing and bringing up to date. But, um, I, we, when we bought it, we did not go into it with the thought of selling off the extra land to finance the upgrades. I mean, we just took it on. And so I understand that you have the ability here to put extra houses on there in order to help finance that, which is great. I would be more likely to support, I would be happier if we were only putting eight in there instead of nine. Just because I think that those are super tiny and it's, we're cramming things in there and that makes me scared a little bit. But I'm gonna support both.
Other comments?
We're commenting on both.
Yep, go ahead.
Both items. Well, I, I like the project. I like it a lot. I think that it fulfills and meets a lot of the goals in the comp plan regarding infill and density and, and those kinds of issues. And I, I think it's great. Uh, I also wanna say, just in case nobody else says it, that I, I really appreciate the Historic Preservation Commission's work on this and, and their discussion and, and action as well. So I'm gonna support the motion, or both motions.
Anyone else?
I'm gonna support the motion, both motions. Uh, I think this does obviously keep the historic preservation as well as allows for infill in an area that it makes sense to do that. I appreciate the traffic. Hopefully with the folks, they'll work together and, and they, maybe you can use the, uh, the gardens there to plant some, some flowers or things like that. Jerry, please call the vote.
Okay, this is for, um, recommendation of approval of changes on number one-six-zero-three-four. Becky S?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, nine to zero. The next item is special permit number one-six-zero-five-five to preserve the landmark John G. L. Cordenor Residence and eight single-family residences on individual lots and one outlot for a private drive and amenities with waivers to sidewalk requirements, lot depth, width to depth ratio. Lots fronting a private and public, public and private roadway requirement, front yard setbacks, minimum lot width and a, and area and sidewalk requirements along the private driveway on property generally located at three-twenty-five South Fifty-Fifth Street. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval.
I entertain a motion.
Move approval, Shear?
A second, Washington.
Thank you. Jerry, please call the vote.
Becky S?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, nine to zero. Okay, the next item is items two, there is associated items, item two-point, or four-point-two-A, changes on number one-six-zero-three-nine to designate the former First German Congressional, Congregational Church as a landmark on property generally located at one-hundred West F Street and one-hundred-three West G Street. Item four-point-two-B is the associated special permit number one-six-zero-five-eight for preservation of a landmark with a waiver request to the rear yard setback and parking requirements on property generally located at one-hundred West F Street and one-hundred-three West G Street. Staff recommendation for the change of zone is approval. Staff recommendation for the special permit is conditional approval. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these applications?
I see none. Ed?
Ed Zimmer, Planning Department. I'll present first on the special, on the landmark designation and then on the special permit. Uh, the property at one-hundred West F Street is a small wood frame Gothic Revival church built in nineteen-twenty, serving the German from Russian community of the South Bottoms neighborhood. It was designed by A.W. Woods, so this is sort of the Cordenor Woods Day on your agenda. It is in the National Register District of the South Bottoms and is regarded as a contributing property in that district. The reason for the specific designation as landmark is of course to have the eligibility for the special permit attached. But I think that, and the Preservation Commission reviewed this on December fifteenth as well and recommended the landmark designation. We argue the significance in terms of both the architecture. One of four A.W. Woods-designed churches in the North and South Bottoms and one of several historic churches in the South Bottoms. And its association with the German from Russian neighborhood and the significance of churches in that community as well. This is the F Street front. Look on, look at it on that, dominating that corner property. They also have an associated parking lot across the alley to the north. And that is very much implicated, the area in which they would put the addition is immediately behind the church. This is a quick look at Mr. Woods's advertisement of nineteen-seventeen. He built houses and commercial buildings, but we've found approximately a hundred churches that Woods has designed in twenty-four different states. So this advertisement was effective. He also, as Stacy had mentioned, designed, I think probably his landmark church or his masterpiece would be the First United Methodist University Place, but often was designing for a wide range of congregations and in some range of style as well, appropriate to the congregations. The special permit is to make the addition on the north side of the church. It would be allowed, the historic status of the National Register District gives it. It would be allowed, the historic status of the National Register District gives it some relief from meeting full floodplain standards because putting an addition on a church that is substantially higher than the floor level of the rest of the church, um, would not, um, really be feasible. Um, and there is a provision in the landmark, in the zoning code that addresses conflicts between historic designation and floodplain. What they're asking here is the ability to make the addition closer to the alley than would otherwise be allowed. In effect, the parking lot across the alley is virtually their backyard, so they're really not impinging on any other property. There would still be ten feet separation between the addition they would like to build and the alley. But building on that parking pad south of the church would also require them to replace those four parking stalls. In this neighborhood, the alternative would be to tear down another property to replace those parking stalls. With a full block of frontage on First Street and full lot north and south on F and G Streets, adjacent their property is about four hundred feet of street frontage. Uh, it does not seem that it would be prudent to tear down a building to replace four parking stalls with that kind of street frontage. They don't control that street frontage, but it is abutting their property. So the only grants you would be giving them by this special permit are to have a slightly larger addition up to ten feet from the alley, um, and not replace the four parking stalls given that they already have a parking lot north and all that street frontage. So as we evaluate these, for how much are they asking beyond what would be allowed ordinarily? Yes, there's some because otherwise they wouldn't be here, but it is not, is not a big ask, um, in our evaluation. Uh, I can show you briefly the addition they planned to build, which the preservation commission found quite compatible with the style of church, a small frame addition with the same kind of roof hood that the other, um, existing entrances have. Like the preceding application, changes to this plan would be reviewed by the preservation commission if anywhere necessary. Um, so the landmark designation gives that added protection. And with that, I would, um, answering questions you have now or turn it over to the applicant.
Questions for Ed?
I think you got the easier of the two.
We, we, we each learn from the other.
I want to compliment, um, the Historic Preservation Committee. I think they've done a wonderful job with this, this, uh, project. Um, I think that, um, the architecture of the addition looks, um, I like the technique they're using. I mean, to make it look compatible instead of different. Um, and I don't have any other concerns about the parking. Um, I'd rather see a historic property saved and I also want to commend the city for the process you use for melding secretary standards to, um, our own zoning. I, it's so easy to understand.
I think this zoning provision is, is the best local preservation incentive we have. We, we don't control the ability to waive taxes or give grants, but to be flexible with the zoning code where it's appropriate and under all the review that occur on these, I think has been a very useful tool throughout the community. Um, as for the architecture, you'd want to compliment the architect.
Thank you. Applicant? Mr. Lyon, you want to come up?
It was my understanding I could just, uh, sit down and shut up. This would move forward. It's not happening. This has been a joy to work with this congregation. Um, they took over, uh, uh, the German east, the, the old German church was aging in place, congregation as well. And another local church, uh, decided to merge with them and, uh, carry on. So from six people who were there the first Sunday, they have a full service of nearly two hundred. A lot of little kids, um, and, uh, a need for some more space. So this solution worked well and we were on track for, for an addition until we saw the opportunity to get five more feet. And we did that, um, through this process. Um, the, the church is attempting to be a lighthouse in the community and does more than just hold Sunday service. Uh, it's a food network site, a very active food network site. And obviously church functions during the week. We've also been involved in some other projects before this. Uh, the church is now ADA accessible, fully accessible from the street with ADA parking. And, uh, and it has not, and it has been done tastefully to respect the architecture. We've also involved ourselves in the restrooms, which were minimal at best. And, um, so the ladies have a fully compliant ADA restroom and the men are patiently waiting for this addition. Other than that, I have, it's been a pleasure to work with Ed, uh, Zimmer to, uh, walk us through this process, which, which is not simple, but it's logical. And, uh, also I've spent some time with Ben Higgins who has helped us do the calculations necessary to meet the floodplain regulations. And, um, the codes administration people have just been, uh, helpful in every respect in terms of moving the plans forward. So the plans are sitting on the desk waiting for, uh, some adjustments and then we're going to move forward. But, uh, those individuals are, uh, dedicated public servants that are, are doing their job well and, and we appreciate that. Appreciate your hearing us and, uh.
Could, could we get your full name and address, please?
My name, Dennis Lyon, Genus J. Lyon Architects. The office is at, uh, Lincoln Trade Center, fifty-nine ten South Fifty-Eighth Street.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here wishing to testify and, testify in support of this item? Is there anyone here wishing to testify in opposition to this item? Since there's no one in here, we'll keep moving forward. Do we have any other questions for the applicant? Okay, we want to call these motions separately?
Yes. Item four point two A is change of zone number one six zero three nine to designate the former First German Congregational Church as a landmark on property generally located at one hundred West F Street and one oh three West G Street. Staff recommendation is for approval.
Entertained a motion?
Some moved.
Thank you.
Finnegan.
Second, Edgerton.
Any discussion?
Um, I think this is a great project and pretty straightforward, um, and I appreciate the work that Ed and, and everyone has worked with everybody on this. Um, I do want to just mention, I, I feel good about the parking thing because I, um, about that waiver because I'm assuming, and this is, you know, what happens when people assume, but I'm assuming since this is kind of a, a neighborhood church that some of those people are coming from the neighborhood, so they might be walking and might not need parking spaces.
Anyone else?
I plan to test, uh, uh, support both motions. I think this is, uh, a good project and, uh, congratulations to the architect for putting it together the way they did. Jerry, please call the vote.
Okay, this is for the recommendation of approval on change of zone one six zero three nine. Becky, yes?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, nine to zero. Next item is item four point two B, special permit number one six zero five eight for preservation of a landmark with a waiver request to the rear yard setback and parking requirements on property generally located at one hundred West F Street and one oh three West G Street. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval.
Entertain a motion.
Move approval, Core?
Second, Finnegan.
Jerry, please call the vote.
Becky, yes?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, nine to zero.
At this time, anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so. We're adjourned.